Waiting on you.
On me?
Greenlit.
Hi Paul.
Hi.
Hi.
Have a seat.
Yeah.
I don't know, is it on the right channel? Thanks for coming in. Yeah.
Uh, this was just to, what happened a few years back, to my understanding, because I was told we couldn't be paid, uh, being on the commission to do any work in this, in any of the cemeteries. And then I found out what the reasoning was. There was a, an employee that worked for the DPW at the time, and he, I guess he was doing things in a cemetery, getting paid overtime. So it was completely, you know, it was shut down.
Yep.
So when I had mentioned it to Marcia, she said, I think you should go to the, go to the board or go to Rhian, and so I went to Rhian, and Rhian suggested that we, that I came to you folks, talked about it and said, you know, we do have an account, so that when we set veteran markers and stuff like that, to anybody that works for the cemetery should be able to be paid.
Because that employee's no longer employed with DPW?
Yeah.
Well, plus I think you do them anyway.
What's that?
You put in the veterans' markers.
Yes. But there was, I'm not gonna go into all the details, but I just wanted, it needed to go back to the board.
Yeah.
For approval. Um, doesn't come out of town money. It either comes out of the veterans' accounts or possibly trust funds.
Okay.
Depending on what needs to be done. So just wanted to-
Well, basically your own money, the cemetery.
Correct.
Yeah, makes perfect sense to me. If there's no conflict, which doesn't sound there's any conflict then-
Sure, you spend a lot of time.
Sure.
Of your own time now, doing it.
Just left it.
Yeah, no, exactly.
So do you wanna step?
No.
Make a motion?
Make a motion and vote on the proposal.
I'll make a motion that, uh, how do you want it worded? That they'd be allowed to-
To allow to be paid.
Pay for the work done in the cemeteries, uh, by their own account. Okay.
I'll second that.
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it? You're all set?
That was a good time.
Back to the cemetery, back to the cemetery.
Back to work.
Thanks, well.
Rhian, nothing's showing up there, I don't know if-
I know, she's gonna call Brittany or text Brittany to see if it's, how to get it to show up here, but I just, I did see it where you were.
Okay.
Okay, next item is your sixty day review of interim DPW director Travis Brown. Travis, do you wanna come up?
I know you're looking forward to this?
I'm excited all day.
Alright, so we had decided that sixty days was gonna be sort of our first review. We didn't pick another yet, right?
No, I think you were gonna discuss with, how it was going now, and then you can either wait another thirty days to advertise, you can advertise now, or however you wanna handle the,
Okay.
The opening.
Alright, we'll see how this goes.
Okay.
Um, so I guess generally, how's your first sixty days gone?
Good, I'm just, uh, getting my feet under me again and trying to figure out what he had going on and, you know, chapter ninety came up, so Dennis and myself were scrambling to get that. You know, I had, uh, I actually had Michael Howard from DOT that does, he's the head of chapter ninety, he had come down with his boss and sat with me in the office, had gone over all the steps and things that we can do with it and so on and so forth, and we had done that. He actually took my bids, uh, the requests that I wanted between Pine Crest and Twin Hill and, uh, my crack ceiling for Boston.
Those are the ones I sent to you the other day?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, those are the ones that he had taken, he said he didn't see any issue with them, so I have, the bids are out and they're gonna close on May tenth.
Any, um, yeah, it's sort of the first time you've delved into that sort of stuff, any, any overwhelming in that process or all pretty straightforward?
Yeah, once you understand it, you know what I mean, it's, I think it's, I had in my mind that it was a rush, 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 gotta get it done type of deal, but I mean, there's still a process there, and obviously you wanna get it in, being that ours is later for certain things, but, um, money wise.
Yeah.
But, um, everybody's waiting to see what we get for chapter ninety, because we're not guaranteed the same allotment every year.
Right.
And, um, so between doing that, getting everything written up and the work in between of getting that, so you know what you need,
Mm-hmm.
It's time consuming, which is part of the job, and I didn't see it overwa- it's just overwhelming now at the moment, because it's, I'm not just doing that, I'm doing other stuff in the meantime, so. It's not bad, I've gone, I've, um, signed myself up for a class, I'm, actually my last class is, uh, tomorrow, and it's a public, public work, uh, academy, it has a flagger, basic roads, snow and ice, work zone safety, OSHA ten, which a lot of your contractors have to have now.
Yeah.
And you can't be on a job site unless you have it, so now I have it, and, uh, trenching, excavating is tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'll have all those classes with all the certificates. I had to do the flagger in the first day, which I already had, but it was part of the class. But the basic roads was good, snow and ice I had over again, and I had talked with Rhian and that, about certain things that I was, uh, actually Jamie today also about, um, some things I'm looking at for the winter time, maybe switching to straight salt. Still keeping a fifty fifty pile for the, below twenty degrees, when we have the real cold nights and salt's not gonna work for us, even the treated,
Yeah.
that we can still put down, and, um, the cost savings, the, the effect that sand is actually having on the environment, especially around town, I mean, you see it at our Benkins, that we're cutting back, um, Gardner Cut Off Road right now, and we're cutting the shoulders on that, I mean, the shoulders were eight inches above the road, and that's why a lot of our roads are deteriorating, because the water can't get off. And, um, so, there's certain roads that we're looking, and there's a process of doing that, it's not, I can just get, grab a bag and go dig on the side of the road, I have to call Dig Safe, that's three days, that I have to wait for that. And then I can do that, but in the meantime, weather has, you know, so there's a lot of stuff that it's not just simple as just grab a piece of equipment, go fix a road or something, it is, there's steps in it, and that's what I've learned, and, I've had a lot, I get a lot of contacts now, I've gone to the NPO meetings, I did one with Rhian, and I've done a few of myself, and, uh, Route sixty-eight from the center of town to the Rutland Line, that went out to bid last weekend. So that's in the process of being done, and then I had to explain to Rhian about, um, from Gardner Road, all the way from GFA to the Gardner Line, because it's such a large number, and, I think it was what, two or three, I believe, three, and they only get five for the year. So it's hard for them to take one large one for one, for one town, when you got multiple towns looking for this tip grant. You know what I mean, so, we were looking at different ways of maybe, like doing Main Street and going up a little further, which would help us on the end to get, maybe get this tip grant, because it would bring that number down.
Yep.
Which I had talked with Michael Howard on, and he was explaining some things to me, because he knows the deterioration of it. We've already, what, stage three of our plans with Malone McBroom, so it, we're in the good stage there, it's just the quantity of money. And honestly, um, knowing some insights, like right now, it's possibly one of the years that they'd have the most money that they would have to return, because they don't have any small projects. Everybody's in there for large projects, so it's kinda, you know, say, when you, if you have a small project, they're looking at you.
That's why the Town Center Committee, we worked with MRPC a bit and with our engineer for the Town Center Design, talking about the exact same thing, how can we break things up into, into fully designed, manageable pieces, so that if there's some amount of money that's available, the state can, can slide over to and say, yeah, let's take care of that, so I think it's a way to be nimble in that, that sort of work.
Yeah, because honestly, that was on the docket, and then they just put it into the appendix, because it is so harsh.
So how about your, you know, your organizational structure, you know, how, like your typical week sort of thing, are you, and as far as allocating out responsibilities to the guys and, and that sort of stuff, how's, how's that been going, what's sort of your process with that?
It, it's good, I mean, right now, we're trying to get the cemeteries rolling, and I have the new guy on, which I have to send one of, our standard labors, you know, our everyday laborer out there with him, so that takes him off my road group. And, um, just today, uh, the new guy we hired, um, had quit at the end of the day today, because of just the cost of the insurance that he had to come up front with, and the union dues, that was a little overwhelming, so he had to leave. So, um, I found out that today, and, uh, so I'm down to three guys again, and, um, we do a great job with the three that we have, and I do jump in and help, especially in the garage or something like that.
Morale, good, how's morale?
Yeah, that's good. We did, uh, we're, three of us were out there hanging, the band is down Main Street, we got them all up, and, uh, they're on, like I said, the Gardner Road, I did the Dig Safe there, that, um, Craig and Jake are doing Gardner Cut Off, doing the shoulders there, they were happy to see that we were there, they said they hadn't been touched in twenty some odd years.
How about your, um, you know, the interface you've had with police and fire and other town departments and all that, that's all?
Yeah, we all work together, I mean, they had, you know, they need something, they ask me, if I need something, I ask them, you know, we get their, I think, um, Wednesday, I wasn't here, that was my two day class for OSHA ten, and, um, Eric had done all three cruises for services, and put, switched over the winter tires to the summer tires. You know, we get them in, you know, obviously if there's an emergency, they come in and we swap around, see what we can do with the equipment. Right now I have a, a truck being diagnosed hopefully tomorrow, if not Wednesday, because, uh, it's shut down, it won't run over five miles an hour now for its emissions.
That's fine.
Yeah, it was the truck we were using on Gardner Cut Off, so it's a real big problem. And, uh-
So what are we down manpower wise, based on today, two guys?
So we've heard some positive feedback, you know, without question, have you been hearing some positive feedback as well from the public and?
Yeah, I have people that call, or, you know, they see me and they talk to me, and I hear from the guys also, because they, they're out on the road more than I am, I'm sitting there shuffling papers around. And, you know, I come, I talk to the guys with, I've done a few driveway permits, I did a trenching permit right here, and, you know, just learning the aspects of that also, you know what I mean, the, the three different steps of just the, the driveway permit between that, the building, I have to sign the building permit, and then obviously the occupancy permit.
Probably a good time of year for you to start off with these things, versus like right in the heat of a, you know.
I think we did well during the big storms that we had, I mean, it can't get any bigger than that.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Incontinence.
And then we were down guys then, so I mean, I think we held it together, I got a good team right now, and I'm, I gotta build on that, on the next two.
Scott Cullen was happy.
He was overjoyed.
Yeah, I saw him at the father-daughter dance.
Oh, Travis.
So, no, that's, that's all good, so, um, where do you, where do you see, uh, deficiencies in the department? You know, whether it's, and, and again, some of this redundant, we've already talked a little bit about it, but as far as labor, equipment, other stuff like that, what do you, and I know you're still sort of getting your feet wet, what do you, feet wet, but what do you see, uh, as things that we need to improve upon that maybe, you know, as a board, we can start thinking about too?
Yeah, um, I think the biggest thing, well, when we, I'm not gonna even go into the money. I mean, we all know what the money situation is, so it's not even that. I think it's more or less if we're able to work together, and we're able to do things because we know what our budgets are, to help us in areas, you know, like, uh, during the snowstorm, I had the fire department, they were plowing out here for us, where we couldn't be. You know, and they would, and I'd asked, you know, Jeremy, he would open up the ends around the fire station in case they had a call, you know, he would clean that up for us, where that was an area that we needed cleaned out, where we couldn't be, because we're all places. That's just an example. Um, police, they help me whenever I, you know, I need something, and obviously we take care of them with the cars or whatever it is. I mean, we seem to have a good camaraderie between us all, and, uh, along with Rhian, I mean, we, and that was another thing, right, um, found out that there's a complete streets class coming up with day's day roads, and I had mentioned that there, so we can take that.
Oh, good. We weren't sure when the next one was, that's good.
No, and I think there was a high demand for them, so.
Jimmy, well, actually when I was talking with DOT, they had known that, and they were trying to figure out when, but they have so many other classes. But, um, he said somewhere around June, July.
Okay.
But it, it, I mean, we have, we're like, you know, trying to get a truck, we're upgrading as much as we can as possible. And with doing that, you don't have the breakdowns, which then saves money, and you're able to put it somewhere else. You know, do more road work, and that's, that's probably what we're looking for, you know, it's not that we don't wanna do any road work, because we do plow and sand these roads multiple times during a storm, so we travel them just as much, if not more, at times, to people that live here. And we understand that the roads are bad, so we want them fixed just as much. Because it damages the equipment, and it's, it's costly, it's a long night, you know, so, that's my big, um, thing, is making sure that our chapter ninety projects go through, because that's what that's for. And, uh, a lot of people have called to see when their road was on, and certain things I was able to tell them, and they were happy to see that, you know, I had one on Adam's road call me, and we ended up going over there patching, she was happy that we went right away, and just come to find out that it is on the docket the next year, so she was even happier. But, you know, as long as we have our money from chapter ninety, and I tell the guys that, you know, quality work is everything, everyone sees you out there, so, and I think people are seeing that, and see how it is, and we hear a lot of loads of compliments from people in town, so, which makes it good for them, because, you know, they're not hearing the negative, they see that the hard work that they're putting out there is being noticed, and that's all that matters.
Alright, um, I just got one more, I guess, and, uh, I guess, sort of a couple different parts to it, is, is, you know, has this first sixty days made you wanna continue doing what you're doing in the role, and have you even looked forward a little bit more to, to think about whether or not you'd actually want the interim tag removed from this? Um, you know, in the future?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would've, usually they say within the, the first two months, you usually can tell. And, um, I've been told that from a few people that have been in my position and that have gone further. And you can usually tell if you wanna deal with the things you have to deal with as being a director, so it, I don't have an issue with it, I kinda did it anyways when, you know, Tim wasn't in, to a point, I didn't do as much as he did. And I, and quite honestly, I, once I got into the seat, it's amazing how much is on the DPW director, just of all the things that you do, keeping up with stuff, expiring and permits and chapter ninety and keeping track of roads, and, you know what I mean? It's, it's a lot of time. I could see where they said that they could use someone else to help with certain things, I know he was always saying a foreman, but, um, I, Dennis has been great for the three days that he's there, I mean, honestly, I use Dennis a lot, and, um, I wish he could be there more, because there is a lot of things.
He's nodding vigorously in the back, just so you know.
I, I really could, and, uh, I, I do, and he's been great, I've, I've texted him on certain things, because stuff ha- seems to happen when he's not there, Mondays and Fridays. And, because it's the long weekend, everyone's got their questions, and it's Friday, they wanna get it before the weekend, you know, and he's been great, he's answered his phone or his texts. But, um, I think a lot, if, if we were able to do something like that, that frees me up with a lot of the paperwork, I'm able to go out and find these problems that are on the road, keep up with the measurements and everything, and seeing what roads really have deteriorated more, to where possibly could go for grants more, you know what I'm saying? Because that's what they want, they wanna know numbers, how, how much that it has, you know, depreciated from last time. And that's how, honestly, like Route sixty-eight, it wasn't anywhere thought of until Tim had brought a few things to their attention, and then they, they put it right back, they put some numbers in there, you know what I mean? But that's what they go by, and they don't know unless you tell them, you know, so that's, with me in the office, I don't really have any of that, you know? Today I was all over town, because I was trying to do Pine Crest and get it marked out, so we can have the guys up there cutting out drains before they go to pave. There's a ton of work that has to be done in there, so it's, that part of it, it just, and then you get people calling, you know what I mean? So, you're trying to just put out all these fires with enough water. So, doing it best I can.
Yep. Well, I don't have anything else, I think you're doing a great job.
Yes.
Uh, you guys have anything else you wanna ask or add?
No, I was gonna ask him the question you just asked him, but he basically answered it, so.
Okay. Uh, well, I think, you have anything you wanna, I mean, you'll probably just restate what we asked anyway.
I don't even know what he asked, so I'll, I'll guess on everything, so.
Alright, well, we should probably set up another one of these, um, you know, I don't wanna make these overly unnecessary. So, maybe another ninety days from now, how's that sound to everybody?
The only concern is that he only has six months per union agreement.
Okay.
So, it's already been two months, so you got four months before he has to choose to go back to the union or up at the position.
So another sixty days?
If you wanna do sixty, and then we can put it out.
Yeah.
If you want, okay.
We'll do one more of these, see how, you know, the spring sort of cleanup and all that sort of stuff has gone, see how you're feeling about all that stuff too, and then readdress it in a couple months? Alright?
When, when, when are we posting the position?
Well, that's up to you, do you wanna put it out after that sixty day review, or do you wanna put it out in a month?
I mean, sixty day rev- if we wait sixty days, that's, that's-
It doesn't-
They only give you two more months.
The time we post it and everything else, I think we should probably do it sooner than later.
Okay.
With my, my two cents.
Put it out in a month.
We'll put it out in a month.
Sure. Alright, thanks for coming in.
Yep, thanks Travis.
Thanks Travis.
Thanks Travis.
Okay, next up would be the legal license public hearing, but that's not scheduled to seven o'clock. So, budget and warrant would take along, do you wanna do the wage authorizations and appointments?
Yep.
Some of these have retroactive statuses, so just, so Thomas Wilkinson is, uh, DPW seasonal, retroactive to April eighteenth.
He's not the one who quit today, is it?
No.
No, Joseph Stymas is working today, he's retroactive to April eighteenth. Alfonso, he's retroactive to March twentieth, he's counseling on aging motor driver. And then you have Donald Blood, retroactive to April twenty-first, he's our newest police officer. Those are your employees, and then you have Larry Brandt, who will be our ADA coordinator.
We need to handle these, uh, one at a time, or can they be grouped?
Well, you can do the four employees for the wage authorizations, and then you can do Larry as his own, because he's an appointment.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the wage authorizations as appro- as submitted, including retroactive pay.
Do we need to state the people, or?
No.
That's okay, I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint Larry Brandt as our ADA coordinator.
I'll second that.
Go ahead.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, and then if you wanna do our licenses, one is for Family Kitchen, which opens on the fourth, and then a one day pour license for Hardwood Vineyard, that's for the two hundred and fiftieth celebration.
What is the Family Kitchen, I don't know, you know, where?
I thought it was like a roast beef place, but, uh, I don't think they do pizza though.
I think they are.
They are doing pizza.
Big science is ice cream.
Ice cream and then-
They are doing ice cream, they have a window that you can just walk up to, but I think, I wasn't sure if they were doing pizza, but they are definitely doing subs.
Tara said she said combo meals on one side and banana splits on the other.
Okay.
Is it somebody in town, is anybody know?
No, it's from what they're, from Worcester.
From Worcester?
Yeah.
And then I think when they, when they don't have ice cream, they're gonna do pies for like holidays from that window.
Okay.
From what I hear.
Pie window.
Pie window.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the common victor's license for Family Kitchen.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the one day pour license for the two fiftieth celebration to Hardwood Vineyard and Winery.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then another quick one would be the application to site plan approval for the senior center, to go to the planning board, and approval and authorization to be on the sign.
I'll make a motion for the chairman to sign the application for site, site plan approval for the senior center.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Another item we can do is approval of the MRPC services grant that the planning board received for the services for master plan. That would be a signature by Dan as well.
I'll make a motion for the chairman to sign the MRPC services grant approval.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, there's two copies of that.
Want me to bring that down, Rhian, Wednesday?
Yes, because then I need Glenn's signature, and then we get one copy back. Do you wanna start our committee updates, please?
Yep. Committee updates, um, building committee, we received filed sub bids for the sub trades a couple weeks ago now?
Yes.
And, uh, they were really very much in line with what our owner's project manager, uh, manager had estimated for him, like, sort of, like within four thousand dollars on hundreds of thousands, so it was pretty close, so no surprises, basically with the file sub bids, no, no real surprises. Besides the fact that we didn't actually get any electrical quotes, so we have to tell the general contractor what to use, and it's just a little odd, because it's a good sized electrical package, and I think a bunch of people did pull out plans, just nobody submitted a quote, which is, I think it's actually better not to have just one, because you can always get, get in trouble if you have that one super high bid that you can't do much about. So basically, the general contractors now just include it, instead of having a, a number submitted by a filed sub bidder in their bid, they find subcontractors and get pricing for that electrical piece for their own bid. So there's no, it's just, uh, I guess a little inconvenient, because we don't have that exact number now, but, um, there's nothing fancy going on electrical wise that we should be too worried about, and then the bids are due on-
Wednesday.
Wednesday, on, um, the general bids, and at that point we'll know what number people will be.
Boarding on.
Boarding on. Um, and we have a meeting on Friday this week to, to basically-
Review the bids and choose-
Basically have, he'll, he'll have done, our owner's project manager will have done his due diligence about reviewing the bidders and their bids within the day in between, uh, uh, meeting, and then the building committee will, will have that presented to recommend for award.
Yes.
A pending town meeting authorization. Um, the, I'm gonna skip over task force just for a minute, but the, so the Town Center Committee, we'll talk about that later on, as far as money regarding the, uh, the budget and warrant discussion, but, um, it appears as though we're gonna be okay to move ahead with our, our twenty-five percent design, as we had discussed at our last meeting or two, uh, based on, on monies that the town has, and not necessarily have to, have to do it in a, in a, in a different way. Uh, in addition, about twenty-five thousand dollars, we, I don't know if you guys recall, but the, we didn't make the cut for the complete streets. Uh, we didn't think we made the cut for the complete streets this session, because they had all been allocated out, but, um, we found out that there was some amount of money, about twenty-five thousand dollars left, that, uh, our engineer modified the application to reflect the amount of money left, and we're waiting to hear, it could be any day now that we do get that twenty-five thousand dollars for complete streets sooner rather than later, so, it's still moving, that's what, and the Town Center Committee, what we're trying to do is just, just, uh, um, not stop, you know, just because it's, things could just stagnate, you know, so anything that we can keep, just keep going, because the, nine, nine people show up every meeting we have, it's a lot of, uh, enthusiasm, so, just wanna keep it going there, so, that's, that's the Town Center Committee update.
Uh, just the bylaw review committee, they're just gonna start meeting in the fall.
Okay.
There won't be anything for that.
And, how many members we got on that?
Uh, we have four members and Joyce Green, as the chairman.
And then the QRSD task force, um, so we had a joint school committee and consolidation task force meeting last Thursday. And it was phase one of the Collins says, center presentation of, you know, results and recommendations, or whatever you wanna call it, so they, we had about two and a half, three hour meeting, um, a lot of people showed up in the auditorium at the high school, and, um, basically presented eleven scenarios. And they had everything ranging from one grade all moving to the high school, to closing three schools, moving the fifth and sixth grade, and keeping two schools open, and they are, you know, all over the place. As part of the task force over the last year and a half, we had sort of done this analysis already with the superintendent's office, but we never really monetized it, so the Collins Center monetized it, said, this is your annual savings. Again, they didn't go into, which I'm a little cranky about, they didn't really go into other uses of the things that might be closed, which is a whole nother discussion that we're gonna, I'll bring up in a minute, but they monetized, said, hey, if this school closes, this school closes. If sixth grade goes here, you will save, you know, one point four million dollars a year, so there's real, um, you know, real money that needs to be discussed. There were also, uh, some promising, you know, sort of a little bit outside the box thinking, because of Monty Tech and, and how, um, big their waiting list is, and, and, uh, Quabin used to have a full scale, um, uh, vocational program, so there's been discussions between Monty Tech and Quabin about potentially sort of sharing some services, meaning opening up portions of the vocational, um, uh, again, at Quabin, and, uh, collaborating between the two, and maybe even some, some classes by the Quabin for vote kids, so, it's, it's, uh, hasn't gone too, too far yet, but I think it's a good way to, you know, save a little bit, and potentially stop some of our kids from even leaving and losing school cho- choice money, or, or, uh, having to pay additional money to the, the Monty Tech if we could just keep them, keep them at Quabin, so, lots of discussion. Um, May tenth, everyone online now will have a, a chance to look at the presentation that the Collins Center made, plus the, the thick, you know, analysis that they did, and all the data, and all the, um, thoroughness that they went through, and then May tenth is- And then May tenth is phase two presentation, and then, you know, we go from there. As we had said a few weeks ago, we had acquired, Ryan essentially, had required, acquired a hundred thousand dollar grant to take it to the next step. So now that we have the, the recommendations, um, or, uh, alternatives. We can now retain another firm to hopefully help figure out which one's the best to implement. As well as trying to have them look at other uses of, so, so that it would actually be something palatable to towns to potentially vote on at a town meeting. So still early-ish, it's sort of frustrating how long the process is, but it's such a big deal to so many people, that it's just gonna take time.
In the paper, in the paper, the article I was reading on that, one of the options they presented, and I'm just curious. Was to have, give, give the school committee the power to, uh, close schools as opposed to having to go before each town. That was one of the options.
Yeah, so, so the, the Collins Center people, you know, as, as we know, we, we changed our regional agreement a few years ago. Which it originally did have the power for the school committee to do that, but on purpose, the towns got together and changed it to say, we don't wanna give the school committee, and the school didn't really want that power. You know, so it, the Collins Center was just sort of an outside entity. It, it makes their job easier, the Collins Center, to say, you know, because they could convince the school committee maybe to do this. So that was why it was in the paper, and I, I knew it was gonna go in the paper as soon as it was, it was said by them, but, you know, we just changed the regional agreement on purpose. So that the school committee couldn't just say, you know, close this, close this, close this, give that, because it's so important to the, the town, each town individually. So that's why it's in, it's in the, uh, the hands of the town.
So I wasn't able to make this meeting, but I went to the one before in February. And when they were talking about school closures, somebody in the audience had asked them not only to monetize the school effect of the budget on the school, if something was closed. But the effect of our property values should, if school closed. Did they present that at all in this?
So that was actually Susan Ring, to her credit, was, that was like the sort of the final question of the, you know, uh, asked that, uh, very straightforward-wise. And they did not do, uh, uh, an analysis as part of their scope for this. However, as part of the, the document that they provided, there are four links to studies in the past that have been done, specific to that sort of thing. And, uh, this hundred thousand dollars that we have to go to the next step, we would be trying to use that to answer that question as well.
Will this be, uh, presented to the people at town meeting? Or how is the, we're getting out, because already there's rumors going around, and I emphasize rumors, but, uh, that this school was closing.
Yeah, well, there's gonna be, because that was one of the, you know, three of the eleven scenarios that Hubbard's Center school closed.
People talking about that.
So you're just gonna sort of take it with a grain of salt. I mean, I, I think just directing people to, to the presentation as best as possible. And yeah, we'll say something at town meeting without a doubt, that says, you know, the school's not closing.
Right.
I think, I think we have to, because I, I think we've all gotten it. We've gotten the same question, just Saturday after the rec deals, that they heard the school's closing September first.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
And, you know, I said, no, I mean, if it's in my power, the school will never close, and that's the stupidest idea ever. Um, but no, the school's not closing September first, so I think there's a lot of misinformation.
So we will definitely get that word out. I think it'd be nice to sort of, let's let May tenth happen first, so we'll let that, that second Collin, Collin Center presentation happen. Um, and then at some, some point after that, we, uh, we, we do it, you know, send something out, as well as stating at a town meeting of sort of where things stand. So, yeah, it's, it's, um, you know, I, I, I do have to say, in my opinion, the Collins Center, if given, you know, if they were some, somehow given the power. The scenario that they would choose would involve closing Hubbard's Center School. That's what I think. But they have zero power, I'm just saying.
Right, they have zero power. I, I don't, I don't understand their rationale for that, because if you look at the enrollments for the schools, I mean, Barry was like three hundred and forty, and we were like three hundred and thirty kids. And then the other ones are ninety-eight, hundred and ten.
So, one of their first maps was a map of, uh, where every kid lives in the district. And it's as simple as that. It was just an analytical, somebody sitting in a UMass Boston, looking at a five-town map, point where every single kid goes. And just had plotting where two schools would be in the middle, so that it would be the least impactful as far as bus routes and all that sort of stuff. And because we're further north, no matter what our population is, and what our, you know, how many kids are in our school and that sort of thing, and what percent-wise, because we're in the north, and the other four are in the south. It just makes sense to that analysis, that this one closes, all those kids go to Ruggles Lane, and then you've got the other schools that go to Hardwood, O-Cam, I think. The other two go to O-Cam.
Yeah, O-Cam.
So anyway, that's just all.
No, but it, when you look at the numbers, I mean, you would bus three hundred and fifty kids out of Hubbardston versus busing a hundred kids out of O-Cam.
Plus, I think their rationale too, for keeping Ruggles Lane was open, is that they're gonna eventually go to middle school and high school in Barry. So going to elementary school in Barry wouldn't be that much difficult.
So there, there, this conversation's happening around the state. And the last, I don't have a, a source on me, so I, I don't wanna claim that I have the exact number, but.
You go ahead.
You know, there, there was a, but I, I, I can get the source. There was a district just west of Springfield that was looking at the same thing. There was a five or six-town district consolidating schools, um, into one or two schools for the district, and they decided not to do that. Because the, the estimated impact on the property value was about a thirty percent decline for everyone's home value, which is huge.
Well, that's, there's four links to studies here. That might be one of them. The, the, well, the studies that I referenced there, I mean, there's, they were, they were, I think for what I call, they were local, maybe it is even one of those things, so.
So it's, I mean, we had talked to Maureen about shared use of the building, which I think is probably the best scenario. But, I mean, we're, that's five steps ahead where we are right now, but.
Yeah.
I would rather see buildings do shared use than just close it, because then we're, that's just a bad idea.
Yep. No, agreed.
One of the things I saw about it is that, now looking at some of the scenarios having Barry at ninety-six percent of, of capacity.
Yeah.
And they're, they're relying on these population projections, and we were doing the housing plan. These population projections are all over the place, and they're wrong. I mean, they're wildly wrong. I mean, if you look at the population projection from nineteen eighty-eight ma- nineteen eighty-eight master plan, it was supposed to have over ten thousand people now. So I mean, they're, and that's one of the reasons why they built the school addition.
And they are basing it on the two studies that were done a year ago or so, whatever it was, that both showed twenty-year projections, one by the Telegram Gazette and another one by MRPC maybe?
Yeah.
Something like that, that showed just market downward spirals as far as kids.
Sixty houses have sold since the first of the year in town. I mean, there's, there're gonna be more people moving in.
Yeah.
Well, you know what'll happen, Tom? They'll close the school, or they'll, they'll close Hubbard's Center School, which wasn't gonna happen. But they're gonna close Hubbard's Center School, and five years from now, they'll say, huh.
We need an addition.
We, we need an addition on Ruggles Lane, because we've got too many kids to.
Exactly what's happening, yeah. Because that's what happened here when they built the addition, even around school community.
That's correct.
That's exactly what happened. That's why it was built.
Well, to, to the, to the, to, to the credit of eleven scenarios, this sort of discussion would be, be had. Instead of choosing scenario eleven, which gets to ninety-six percent, and closing three schools.
Yeah, I know.
You'd, you'd go scenario seven, which closes school schools, two schools, and leaves seventy-three percent in there, so you've still got twenty-seven percent capacity for increase later on. So I think these discussions would all be had. I agree with you?
My, my, my question to the school committee, which I had asked a couple of times, is I certainly hope that they're not basing their success on closing schools. Because if they think that, that any of the individual towns are gonna vote to close their school, I think they got another thing coming. I don't see Hubbardston doing it. I don't see any of the towns doing it to close their schools. I certainly hope that that's not how they're looking for the, the path forward, because I, I, I just don't foresee that happening in any of the towns.
Yeah, so, I mean, they don't want to, in my opinion. I've been part, jointly part of these meetings for a while now. Um, but as far as how the future looks, if people aren't gonna pay for it, something has to be done. Because it, that will not sustain if prices for the union goes hot, keep going higher, for insurance go high. We have no longer any excess and deficiency funds. Again, I'm not advocating any of that, I'm just saying, they've gone through a lot of discussions to get to this point, where it's like, we gotta talk about this seriously. Because it's not looking good, you know, five years from now, ten years from now, any of that stuff. So that's why. But I, I agree, I'm just saying, there's been a lot of discussion into it. This is not something, because it's easy, that anyone's ever sort of gone to. It's gone to because it's had to, you know, uncomfortably come up. Yeah, sure.
Question. Do they have a, a scenario on the bus costs as far as per town? What it costs the towns, or is it all incorporated, what?
No, it's all broken down. They, they go through the costs. We, we had always heard anywhere from thirty thousand to fifty thousand per bus. Um, and then that's a factor in what they've got. But that actually came up at the meeting on Thursday night. Um, because people did say, well, you're gonna have more buses, because you're gonna go further, that sort of thing. The, it, it didn't really move the needle at all, as far as the total savings that they presented. Adding a couple buses didn't do anything to it. So they, they sort of got right ahead of that, and said, you know what, don't try to blame this on busing, or say busing's gonna cause this to be impossible. And then people raised their hand and said, hey, you know, I gotta go from New Braintree to Hubbardston in January, you know, uh, what, you know, so that, that sort of, not. A lot of the discussion came up there, but as far as it cost us.
I asked the question because my daughter lives in Bellingham, and each household pays for their child to take the bus, if they so choose.
Huh, no, that never came up.
So I didn't know if it's been in a discussion at all, because mine up out here, I don't know about any of the other schools. I don't know if it would be cost-effective, or.
School committee probably has talked about that in the past, but as part of the stuff that I've been around, I, I've never heard that come up.
I, I remember Maureen, we had asked Maureen that many years ago about that. And there was a one-mile, three-mile, something mile rule, one between one and three miles. I don't remember what it was. But you can, I don't think you can charge the kids for busing past that. It's like if they live five miles from the school. If I remember correctly, you couldn't, but you could charge them within that three-mile radius or two-mile radius. But they opted not to do that here, because we don't have sidewalks, and we don't have any safe route for kids to get to school. So for the little bit of money that it would bring in per family, um, it, they said it just wasn't, they weren't really generating enough money to pay for the bus. And they'd rather have the kids take the bus than try to walk on Gary Road, or something like that. I, so I, I do remember discussion like that, but it was, the amount of kids that they could charge for it was minuscule for that.
So, task force, that's about the, the update there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so now we can do the license for the hub of the hub. This is Michelle Murch. She's looking to, uh, open a retail establishment that will sell artisan items, handmade goods such as pottery, jewelry, cards, jams, honey, et cetera. The majority of items sold will be on a consignment basis, so my inventory costs will be limited. Some items will be brought on, bought on wholesale. I'm requesting this license in order to work with small, family-owned local business. That will produce their own wine, hard cider, and perhaps beer.
That she would be what, then selling?
Yes. And this is located over at the O'Will's store.
Yeah, mhm. That's a good idea.
What do we have to read? Sort of get the open of the public hearing for it, or?
Yeah, here are the, um.
Hey, yes, would that require an ABC license?
Yes.
Yes.
And it says, she has it right here. Anyway, why don't you read it?
You go ahead.
You asked me. Notice a public hearing. The board of selectmen of Hubbardston has scheduled a public hearing upon the application of an off-premises wine and malt license from Michelle Murch. Doing businesses, the hub of the hub, one Main Street, Hubbardston, Mass. Oh one four five two. The premises are described as a one-floor, front entrance, three hundred and twenty-two square foot store. Interested parties should present themselves at the select board office, seven A Main Street, Hubbardston, Mass. on Monday, May first, two thousand seventeen, at seven P M.
Is anybody here to discuss, um, this public hearing item?
Great name.
Hub of the hub. Hub of the hub. Yeah.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion. All in favor? Yes.
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 Budget.
Budget.
Okay, there've been a lot of changes, so we can take it little by little.
Let's go slow.
So the reason for the changes is because the Quabin assessment came in a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars lower than what we had assessed in the budget. So I moved a couple of things around, and I'll go through that now.
And we're a hundred percent sure?
Absolutely.
I know I've already asked that a few times, but yes, we're.
Yes. And I sent it to Eric and had him check the sounds, because I'm always freaked out about that. So, so the left side is where the revenue, no changes there. Uh, your operating revenues is the eight million, five forty-two. Your free cash is still the six thirty-eight. The overlay surplus is the fifty thousand. Your operating budget is eight million, seven hundred and sixteen, which we'll go over in a little bit. Your two articles are still the transfer to Gmail, and you're seeing your tax work off. And then if you go over to the right, you'll see your capital articles. It's still the DPW sweeper, the police cruiser, and the Quabin exterior trim painting. Two new ones, because of the assessment being lower, we can now make the main street engineering out of free cash, rather than a stabilization transfer. And a new one that came up out today is slate ceiling repair. I don't know if you can see it in here, but. We had some tiles over the weekend fall in the police department, and came with four mice. And then a bird flew in, and now the bird's somewhere up there. And then, uh, in here, when Kristen came in, again, there was more insulation on the floor, so they're starting to collapse. So all the tiles, or the majority of the tiles, have to be replaced. Now, to do a solid ceiling would be much more expensive, so this would be a replacement of the tiles, but that's blown in insulation, so it's gonna be messy. So that is estimated about, I don't have an actual estimate, because it has happened today, but I talked to a couple of people, and it ranges about twenty thousand to do that.
Okay, keep patching this thing together.
So that is a free cash item. That's in cash capital. So, and then if you go down at the bottom, you'll see your free cash uses is the capital budget, which is two hundred and one. Free cash, your transfer to stabilization is now two hundred and forty-five thousand. It was two thirty-eight. That has increased about sixty-seven hundred. Your articles are the same for seventeen thousand, one hundred, and to fund the operating debt service is a hundred and seventy-three. Now, it was two seventy-five, and if you remember the five-year financial forecast, we were always gonna plan on transferring a hundred and seventy thousand of free cash to pay for the capital, and that's on budget now.
Okay. Okay.
So now some items that I changed.
So what is our percent increase from the, the assessment? What did it end up being?
It's only, um.
Couple?
Three point something, is it?
One point one three, is what it said.
So, I feel like there's gonna be a backlash of this.
I don't know, but, I mean, we have a good cushion, so if there is a shortfall.
No, I mean, like, what did they take away from the schools?
I think they didn't do any capital expenditures. I think Mark Wigler was saying that they're not gonna make any major improvements.
And maybe they don't have as big of a surprising sp- special ed.
No, Ian.
Increase that they did last year, remember? A million and a half last year.
It was. Ian, do you remember if one of the requests was gonna be, um, floor repairs in the school? They worked that into the budget, so they're gonna be able to do three classrooms in that school without coming to us for an article.
But we're still paying, paying the trim.
We're doing, still doing the trim. They have requested that. Okay, so line item budget-wise, on the first page, I increased the annual audit line to eighteen thousand, five hundred. We put it out to a couple of auditing firms to see if anybody wants to pick it up. So far, we haven't heard back. But I increased it about three thousand, just in case it comes in a little higher than the previous years. Uh, if you go down a little further on the page, where it says treasurer, collector, financial clerk, there's five thousand in there now. We should, she doesn't have an assistant treasurer collector, and sometimes during the year she gets extremely busy. So this five thousand would allow her to use the assessors clerk, who you approved last meeting, to do special projects.
Okay.
So that's five thousand there. Next page, the change was IT computer, computer maintenance, just increased just about, from the last meeting, about two thousand. That's for the switch to Gmail. And then your police wages.
Are we double-dipping though, if we have it here?
No, because the twenty-one hundred for the article.
Yeah.
That's to move all your archives over.
Okay.
And then it's twenty-one hundred a year going forward.
Who does that?
It's, uh, CMBs. Now, I did ask them about Microsoft three six five. That's only five dollars a month, but they said there's major problems with that. However, I'm still gonna discuss that with them, because Rutland's moving to that. Gmail is ten dollars a month. Microsoft is five dollars a month, but I don't believe Microsoft comes with the archiving. So we're probably better off on our Gmail. Next change was police wages. That was increased seven thousand dollars. That's to cover overtime while our new officer is at the academy.
Yeah.
Those are the only changes on that page. The next page. You see the change to Quabin is now the four million, three twenty-three. And then the DPW wages was restored, without delaying the hire for three months. That was about eighty-eight hundred that we had taken out prior.
Wait, see, I missed that. Say that again.
The DPW wages, we decreased that about eighty-eight hundred to delay hiring, just to meet that no operating subsidy, but we were able to put that back in.
It was, I thought the director number was lower than seventy.
It was sixty-five, but then I put it back to seventy at the last budget meeting, so it was seventy the past two.
We did, okay.
So we're gonna rehire the two, the two spots?
We're gonna rehire the one spot to finish out this fiscal. We're gonna rehire the one spot to finish out this fiscal year, and then he'll be able to hire the new one.
Next fiscal year?
Yes. The next page. Uh, I restored the cleaning service for the library utilities, the two thousand, the quarterly cleaning.
Can I s- go back to the DPW for a sec? Sorry. So, the search committee is gonna be something we're gonna need too.
You are.
So, that needs to be in place as we advertise the position.
So what we could do is you could create, create the charge tonight, or I can do it and bring it to the fifteenth.
Let's just do it tonight.
Okay.
And then anyone with interest.
We can advertise starting tomorrow.
Okay.
What kind of makeup do you want? Do you want one board of selectmen? Do you want? I don't know how it was last time when we did Tim.
We weren't on it, honestly.
No.
I don't think we should be either.
So I'll take a look at what, who.
Dennis, were you on the?
I was not, no.
Were you not?
Did we even have a search committee?
We did.
Mhm, cause I remember ta- they were presented to us.
Okay, alright, I'll see what the makeup was last time. So did you wanna take a vote on that to make that charge now or the?
I think, I think we might as well, you know, um, we're gonna need it. Might as well get the word out sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Well, let me see who was on it first.
As far as what?
Positions.
Who was on?
You wanna just mirror what it was last time?
Uh.
With the makeup. I don't remember who was on it. I mean, not people himself, but positions.
Yeah, that's fine, just wait.
I'll bring it on the fifteenth.
Okay.
Okay, next cha- next page is the last page. I made two changes. I increased the unemployment compensation. Because you should have at least one full year in that line item, so that I put up to twenty thousand. And then general insurance, I increased a little bit as well because the final number is still unknown. We do have it out to bid, so it, it could be lower than this hundred and forty thousand, but I'm not sure, so I thought a hundred and forty thousand was a safe number.
Can you explain the unemployment thing?
The unemployment is if somebody is terminated and has a right to collect, uh, they can get up to fifteen thousand a year. If they decide to collect the whole year and not look for another job. So having twenty in there would at least satisfy at least one person being terminated.
Okay.
Which I don't foresee happening.
Yeah, no, that's safe. I mean, it's stuff you'd normally do when you're not trying to cut everything down to.
Right, well, you have a claim right now, so that would cover at least that claim.
So the, um, back up to the other page here, the things we're gonna, we're putting in for debt service.
Yes.
So the roads project, that obviously continues for another s- seventy years, whatever it comes out to.
Yep.
Um, the dump truck that we're still paying off, is that a ten year or a five year?
That is a five year.
Five year, so that's two thousand nineteen that's done. And then, we are gonna purchase the new dump truck?
Then, I mean, you could take a final vote on that this evening. That twelve fifty is just to, the borrowing charge again, and start with the payments the following year.
Okay, so we'll overlap for two years. No, we'll overlap for one year, two thousand nineteen.
One year.
For that one. Engine three is coming off this year.
That's just the last payment.
And then next year we'll be adding.
Engine one.
Replacing engine one.
Yes.
Okay. And then the SUV is probably five years.
Five years. Now, there won't be any for a cruiser next year. I already confirmed that. So, uh, I know Travis will need, uh, the smaller truck. You know, offhand. Okay, but it, the, the items coming next year will not be as significant as they are this year.
Okay.
Don't hold me to it. I haven't seen everything yet. It shouldn't be. So if you see at the bottom there, the total debt budget is two seventy-six, and we're putting a hundred and seventy-three of free cash towards it.
And I guess just because we've modified it, the way we had it before, just making sure everybody's still on board with the main street engineering, wanted to sort of move forward with that.
Mhm.
Everyone's still.
And I know last time it was at sixty-five because we asked him to decrease it.
Right.
Because we had the funds, I brought it back up to a hundred and seventy-five.
No, it's the right thing, I mean, it's gonna eventually cost it anyway, so might as well.
It would be the following year anyway, so.
It gets, as we said before, it gets us closer to the point where they can grab our project because it gets more of the design done, um, and just, uh, accelerates the process.
Okay, so, uh, you are required by the charter to vote on the budget this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Second motion?
Discussion, questions? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next up are the two warrants, which are also required to vote on this evening and sign. The first one is the special town meeting. Only two articles and they're both CPA. First one is the appropriations for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, and then the second article is forty-five hundred. Uh, to appropriate forty-five hundred from the CPA overseas reserve account to pay for the appraisal of the Malone Road property.
Wait, wait a minute, I'm confused on that.
Okay, so.
Cause it says voted on two thousand fifteen and then rescinded in two thousand sixteen.
What that is, uh, we voted a Malone purchase.
Mhm.
And then it fell through.
Right.
But those forty-five hundred dollars done with the appraisal and other work, that still would be paid. Then I think, is there any annual town meeting? Is there, uh, not, because we sent that vote?
Um.
Well, it.
There should be. I took the ones that Jesse said, so.
Yeah, there was something about this, it wasn't worded appropriately, or we rescinded it out last year.
Okay.
And that forty-five hundred is still hanging out there.
Because it wasn't worded pro- proper, right?
Okay.
Do we still have to pay for the appraisal?
We already paid for it.
You already paid for it?
Yeah, so it's a matter of just where it came from. One of the five CPA buckets, which I think here is coming out of presentated, that's what I heard. Which is the largest bucket and you can use it for any purpose.
Okay.
I think it's more a housekeeping issue than anything.
Yeah, basically.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the special town meeting warrant as presented.
Second motion?
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'll pass that one. Okay, on the annual town meeting warrant, there were a couple of changes since we last reviewed it. Article six is to see if the town will transfer for the peg access reserve for appropriation, the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. For costs associated with cable access. This is designating twenty-five thousand dollars for that revolving fund. So last year they approved the existence of it, and now they're designating the amount for it, which you'll see in article seven, is listed on page four.
Okay.
So the other change to this is article seven, if you see underneath the peg access is a public records revolving fund. So when somebody has a public records request that requires time and expense as far as materials like USBs or discs. They charge the requister and that requister pays, but that money goes into a general fund. So the department that has to fulfill the request isn't able to replace wages or materials. So this revolving fund would allow those materials and wages to be replaced with the fee paid.
Okay.
Article nine will be filled in with the budget that you reported on this evening. Article ten is your senior tax work off. Article eleven is the sums being transferred to stabilization. Article twelve are your free cash. Your refurbish. Your police cruiser, Gmail server, the center school trim painting. Your engineering for Main Street and the slave building ceiling costs. Article thirteen is the fires, the fire truck. Article fourteen is the, your senior center, which is the number you're still waiting on. Article fifteen is the DPW truck. Sixteen will be removed. That's the Main Street. Article seventeen and eighteen are the CPA articles. This one is not in there. Uh, article seventeen is the appropriations and article eighteen is the hundred thousand dollars for the repair to the Day Spring Congregational Church. I think they only needed the one special town meeting article.
That could be a disclose in confusion.
And then your general articles nineteen is a planning board article regarding the, um, land and the parcel of forty-seven Brigham Street to take the tax title. Twenty is a pilot program for Burigo Solar on Williamsville Road, and twenty is the moratorium on non-medical marijuana establishments.
That's it?
That's it.
Alright, so I'll make.
So, we have, just add one more thing here. We, we have a ballot question?
Yep, that's next.
So I will make a motion to approve the annual town meeting warrant as presented.
Uh, pending town council review and number for the senior center.
Yes.
I'll second that. It was amended.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, next is the ballot question for the senior center. This, right now we do have an argument against, I'm waiting for the in favor. We do have somebody that's gonna write it. Mark Wigler's gonna write it.
Who is?
Mark Wigler. So this is basically for, um, your forward against for the ballot for the senior center reads very similar to the prior year.
And this will also have the amount of funds coming through on the ballot, or is it or no?
I don't believe this one lists the funds. This is on the side, like, this is the handout that goes out with the warrant, and then it's also, it's listed on the side of the ballot for yes and no argument.
So how about, um. What the average tax bill?
What the average tax bill on here?
I think that's a question everyone's been wondering about.
Okay.
And, you know, we, we did it before when we were going through it with Anita, as far as whether it was gonna be twenty years or thirty years, you know, that sort of thing. And not looking for crazy analysis here, but just something that gets us pretty close.
Alright, so I'll do twenty, thirty, and forty.
Okay. Don't even do forty. I don't even think, no, it's like, everyone gets insulted with the forty.
Don't do forty. Twenty and thirty. Okay. So we do ten, twenty, thirty?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. So pending that adding of the average, you need to vote on this so that Joyce can move forward with the wording.
So I'll make a motion to approve the ballot question as presented with the addition of, uh, impact to average tax bill.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Anonymous.
Okay, now we can skip all the way down to town legislature report. Uh, first item is complete streets, which Dan, you already covered.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Elm Street and Route sixty-two, so the state contacted Travis and they're gonna put out to bid next year the repair of the culverts on sixty-two. This would require detouring the trucks, another avenue, most likely Berry and Elm Street. So you would eventually in the future have to consider opening that road for trucks.
It's gonna be a big deal.
It is, especially, I don't think it would collide with Main Street. I don't think we'll be there at that point.
Wrong word to use.
That's a pretty tight, I mean, coming down, paying school there for trucks and stuff to come by.
Plus the road is not in a great condition to begin with, so if the decision does not have to be made right now, however, you really need to start thinking about if that's the way that you want them to go.
So these two culverts are the culverts that if you're driving towards Rutland, you take a right on sixty-two?
Yes, you take a right on sixty-two and they're on the left-hand side, and then they, they go onto.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's swampier.
Yeah, yeah, swampy, yeah.
They really think it's gonna be down for a year.
Yeah.
They, they, well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna totally just, uh, guess this, but I perform culvert projects like this. Oftentimes, specifically if it's paid, paid for by the state, like if a town, we're gonna be putting this out to bid and paying for it, we'd be like, jobs are gonna be done in ninety days, hundred and twenty days. But the state typically doesn't put that pressure on contractors, so they'll just put three hundred and sixty-five days in there, and it'll be in the contract, even though it'll take a third of that or something. Uh, because it's, it's just not that big of a project, so I, I think that it'll probably be worded like that, like we've done state projects before, we've got five times as much time as we need. So it's just sort of the way things are worded, but I mean, I'm, I'm guessing, but I, it just doesn't seem like that big a job.
I mean, even three months putting sixty-two out of service is gonna be a.
It's gonna be hard with school, the buses and.
Well, we, we would hopefully maybe try, try to be able to work with, with the state as this thing goes out and, and try to put a timeframe that get, gets it so bids are in and whatnot. So that summertime is most of the construction period if possible, so.
So I'll keep you updated on that. Ragged Hill lots and Sell Tower leases are bo- both going out May third. Uh, the Ragged Hill deadline is July nineteenth, which gives a good amount of time for them to be out and advertised, and the Sell Tower bid deadline is June twenty-ninth. Uh, disability grant, the Massachusetts Office of Disability has announced a grant program that the town should take advantage of for much-needed repairs. The ramp at front of the center school was out of compliance, as well as the entrance to the senior center. Also the park. Jamie Etta emailed me, he wants to make sure that the park also has, uh, ramps available.
Yep.
So there was an accessibility plan that was conducted in two thousand and seven. We'll use that as a guideline to list. The first step was to appoint Larry this evening as the coordinator.
Okay.
Uh, created a grievance process and form, I sent it to Larry, and hopefully I'll have a chief at the next meeting to approve those as well.
Okay.
Two hundred and fifty eighth items, this is a lot, so obviously, you know, the flags went up. There are, the issue with the fireworks is not resolved for Yetta, so we've been looking at other areas that we can.
I get a spot.
Okay.
With the N D C fields, just past our property, and where the guy who wrote cutoff is.
Okay.
Those are NBC, NBC fields. Rick Green cuts them.
Okay.
They may let you put them in there, and he usually has this cut done by mid-June.
Okay, cause I also asked about Berry Falls. Donnie Bertham's looking into it. So if we can get Berry Falls that, or.
Well, I mean, I was just, I was just thinking about.
Yeah, no, thanks for the idea, but we'll look into both of those.
Cause in the back there, in the back, it's wide open and the only, the only neighbor there would be the Scotts. Hillary Scott.
Okay.
And you can park in the front of it.
Would they be liable to object?
No idea.
You can ask them, let's check.
They, they, we're behind it, so.
The school said no.
They what?
We, we checked the school, and they kinda chuckled and said, oh. They think it's too close to the school, so, so we'll check that one, we'll check Berry.
I mean.
It's amazing, cause every other town can do fireworks every now and then.
Well, I think people are pict- you know, picturing like the Esplanade.
Donnie Bertham, when I talked to him the other day, he said for every, every certain amount of fireworks, you have to have a certain yardage that you can go out. He said for the fireworks that you're gonna put off, he goes, I would never do fireworks at the school. He goes, there's too many houses and too many liability. So I guess we agree with that, and.
Are you familiar with Clark Field in Wiltshire?
No.
If you were, you'd have to go see that. It's bigger than our rec field, and they did it in the dead center of that. Our M I C group did the first aid station up there. They were dead in the center of that, so that point is accurate. You gotta have that wide out of the area.
Yeah.
So our rec field would even be very tight.
Hmm.
And kind of limited, even though we did do it for the two hundredth.
Berry Falls would be kinda cool.
Two hundred and fifty, sorry.
It would. The only part that would be a little, um, troubling is the parking, but I think for one night it.
Yeah, I, I think.
Mostly Barry.
Yeah, it is, but we probably.
You have to get Barry involved.
Well, it's federal land though, right?
You ever tried parking for the Rutland fireworks? That's.
Yeah.
That's brutal. Very brutal.
That NBC land though might work, because it's.
Yeah, we can check.
You can park all of the front there and then people can walk up the hill.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Try that. That's in town.
It is, so we'll add it to the list. Alright, and then there's five invoices that I need you to prove, cause they're all over a thousand dollar threshold. So the first one is for the porta potties. This one is one thousand fifty-five dollars for United, and Dan Ashley, you'd need to sign that.
So I'll make a motion, do you need to make a motion for each one, is right?
I would, cause they're different amounts.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for the chair to sign the, um, portable restroom contract, eighty-two fifty.
I, I, I rent these things all the time, and the deluxe restroom that they're charging us for is like double what the normal is, costs, and I guarantee you they're gonna just give us a regular restroom. Cause I asked for the deluxe.
I'd like somebody to inspect it.
I didn't know you can make a porta potty deluxe.
You can.
Does it have a fan in it?
Magazines and so forth.
So I'll, I'll second that. Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next one is Aleppo clowns. This is for a thousand dollars.
Come again?
Aleppo shrine clown unit, they're for the parade. They'll be in the parade, and then six, four to six clowns to attend, uh, to walk in the parade as well. This one is a thousand dollars, so I.
Obviously it doesn't have any clowns.
Yeah, but I have an important right here. Alright, I'll make a motion to, to approve the, um.
Say it.
Aleppo clowns.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I believe this next one is clowning for kids. Another clown, I believe this is, uh, another twelve hundred.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve, um, Clowning for Kids Foundation for the, uh, parade.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Nightmares for everyone.
Okay, well, here's another nightmare. This is the chainsaw carving man.
Oh my god.
This is two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, but at the end we get a bench.
Oh.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the, um.
Say it.
Wayne de Morinville Artworks.
Cool.
The Chainsaw Carving Man, dot com.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and your final one is for, um, uh, it's actually called Animal Farm. It's twelve hundred dollars. Actually, it's Animal Craze. So that's my overall.
I'll make a motion to approve the invoice for Animal Craze. What is this? This is a, like a petting zoo?
It's a petting zoo.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, next item is the tax collector. Uh, she was originally granted parole from May eighteenth, however, she has now been released as of Friday. So I'm still waiting to see if that twenty days restitution hearing is twenty business days, twenty days in general, or is it after parole? Parole, I believe, ends in September. So I'm still waiting on KPLA to give us back on that.
Okay.
Uh, the key to the town pit, there's a new lock that's been placed on the gate, however, your ninety-day deadline for the Marinelli Sisters is this Saturday, so if you could extend that again? And if, do you wanna consider instead of ninety days, doing a little longer?
Yeah, I would.
So, how much?
So, six months?
Yeah.
Yeah, six months, okay. Alright, so I just need a motion to approve that.
Motion to, uh, give the Marinelli Sisters the key for another six months.
Second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, and finally, um, the twentieth annual Hubbardston Library five K is scheduled for Saturday, September ninth, so I just need a board to approve them using the road and closing the road down.
I will, uh, make a motion to approve the annual Library five K using Barry Road.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, there are no meeting minutes, uh, so all business.
Um, any status update on the, um, uh, Country Hen scholarships?
I believe we got one.
Two.
Two.
We actually got two.
It's the deadline today.
Yes.
So there are two. So you have to decide, do you wanna split them, or do you wanna have just one?
Or, we did last year, which was extend the deadline.
Or you could extend the deadline.
So we, exact same scenario last year. We had two, we met to discuss whether or not we would extend the deadline further, didn't get any more, and, and that was a very qualified, um, applicant received it.
It's twenty, it's a thousand dollars, right?
A thousand dollars or two five hundred?
You know what I'm saying, but that, that's my point. I, splitting it with the cost of education today is, five hundred is really not much.
I would say. I'd say one. You guys wanna extend it, or you just, just close it and?
Just close it.
I would close it.
Okay.
Okay.
If they didn't get any better deadline, he didn't get a better deadline.
Sounds good, right.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Alright, public and press question and answer.
Hey, anything from anybody out there? No? Okay.
Actually, I have a, a question on all business. We had talked a while ago, like, I think K and P was gonna look into, as far as Cindy goes, um, suing her estate or looking for some other recovery.
Mm-hmm.
What was the final?
The problem with that, I was told, is as far as like her house. So if her husband was involved, then you could easily take the house. But because he is not part of the conviction and the whole deal, you can't take the house. And so then I had them looking at the, um.
Trust.
The trust, and so they're still looking into the trust.
That was a problem though, cause there were so many trust members and whatnot, and.
Yeah, oh, there's like twenty to thirty people on that deed.
Right.
So.
But didn't she al- they also homestead some of that?
They, yeah, but the homestead doesn't count once you've convicted. But because Al didn't have a part in this, the crime, it'd be very hard to take the house. Now we are still looking into the retirement.
What about going after, um, the old auditor?
Would you do that?
Talk about that.
What was that, Mike?
Going after the old auditor for malpractice.
Oh.
If they missed it for some reason.
Wasn't that part of, um, the bond company? Didn't they need to say the bond company?
I believe the bond company was gonna go after the auditor also, but I didn't, I mean, I asked for that. There's no reason why we couldn't.
I think we should pursue that.
So if we're gonna, I agree, I think the way I would word it is if we're gonna get into the restitution phase of this now, we went through the criminal phase and all that. If we're gonna get into the restitution phase, we gotta go all in with the restitution phase. So any, anything that we previously talked about, we still gotta readdress and, and, um, and try.
Okay, I will email it tomorrow.
Well, that also involves court, right?
It does.
As I recall, when the sentence was issued, the judge said, when she, when she's out, we'll revisit this in court, restitution, so.
I feel like something like an owned house, even whether there's another party to it or not, when you get to a restitution hearing though, there's gotta be, and you're arguing your case, um, that there's gotta be some way that.
Well, you can probably put a, you can't take the house, but you can probably, you can probably lean her half of the house.
Okay.
So at the time of sale, we get the proceeds from that hedge.
Yeah, just anything we could do, right?
Okay.
I definitely would go after the malpractice insurance for, um, professional liability insurance from the auditors.
Okay.
The detour that was being discussed about Route sixty-two?
Yeah.
That six, sixty-two going to Barry, is that what the, the whole road will be shut down, or?
Yeah.
It most likely will be from sixty-eight to Barry Road.
Barry Road. I can picture trucks making this, I'm sorry, it's been many years since trucks were making this corner up here. I cannot, I remember when it, when it, I was here when it was passed to put the restrictions on.
So you can't, so Anita had looked at doing a, um, a detour through like Rutland and stuff to come around, but we legally can't post a detour through another town. So we can post a detour through our town, and whether trucks choose to take it, they may decide they're gonna go out somewhere else and come around, but we can't legally post a detour somewhere else.
The only thing we could, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So the only thing you can do is you can send them out maybe to Williamsville and.
Well, I was gonna say, we could restrict trucks from going down that road.
Right.
All other traffic could use Elm Street, but we could restrict, no, truck traffic, you know, five ton, three ton, whatever, some, some amount, whatever doesn't affect path.
Right. No truck traffic.
Elm Street already has a sign about trucks.
It may have a sign, but it may, A, not be enforced, or, what's that?
Yeah, it's a no truck. It's no trucks on Elm Street, no.
But I feel like we asked him about that before, and it was just a sign, and it wasn't actually a.
An over eighteen thousand pounds or something, or some.
There's a weight limit going down there now. I remember, I remember when it was discussed and passed.
Yeah, and, uh, if, if it already exists, why does a detour make it not exist? That was your, you know.
I don't know, we're gonna have to look into it, but there was.
Yeah, detour, yeah.
Yeah, no, the, I remember talking to Tim about this a while ago, about some other reason, and it was like, we posted something, but there was no actual basis for it.
Yeah.
Like, you know, some streets have certain weight limits because they have a bridge on there that can't take the certain capacity. I feel like this may not have been done, um, necessarily.
We just bought the signs and.
Yes. Maybe not, but that might have happened, so I think we gotta look into that.
The road was collapsing and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I believe you go to the state for that permission to put up such sign.
Yeah.
And once you get the permission, it's, it's a real thing.
Yeah.
But maybe we didn't go to the state.
I'm not sure. Can I research that?
I will, I'll look through it.
You have to research it, but I was on the board at the time, and we did go to the state.
Oh.
You did?
Oh.
And I'm, I'm pretty sure we got approval from the state for it. There were some parameters we had to fall into, do certain things, but we proved to them at that time, trucks could go down sixty-eight, go on sixty-two.
Mm-hmm.
And state blessed off on it, that's my recollection.
Okay.
So that should be here somewhere in the file, but state, we're everywhere.
Alright. Well, I guess we gotta get to the bottom of that, and then, as you were saying there, Williamsville would be the next, it, that's magical way to go.
Right, next larger road.
How would you get on Williams, oh, yeah, it's.
Make it on hail. Hail to Williamsville.
Yeah, hail to Williamsville, the Barry, the sixty-two.
Yeah.
That would be a nightmare.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Animals will come flying downhill as they do now.
Not as big, not as big of a nightmare as a failed culvert though, that closes it.
Yeah, that's not really why. True, that would be closed definitely.
Right.
Right.
In short term, couple of months.
Okay, any else from anybody? No?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-one.
Second the motion.